So we're here, we're discussing masks, and that seems like the least of the problems in this district right now. Because again, we're all here fighting for what's best for our children, and we're fighting for more freedoms for everybody, not to restrict freedoms from anybody. So let's move on. Some of the coronavirus comments that have come out about, you know, we're never going to beat this, or we just need to do the vaccine so we can nip it in the butt. We're never going to get rid of coronaviruses. Animals are known harbors of coronaviruses. They're always going to be around. Let's build our immune system. Let's not stop the immune system with a mask, because the masks are more detrimental because of the things that we're inhaling that get trapped in those masks. Again, we're not taking freedoms away. We're looking to give everybody more freedom. People have said that if you want to learn from history, so you don't repeat it. You need to learn history so you don't repeat it. Let's take a look back, 1945. Herman Göring in the Nuremberg Trials. They asked him, "How did you convince the German people to accept all this?" His reply? "It was easy and it has nothing to do with Nazism." "The only thing a government needs to turn people into slaves is fear. If you can find something to scare them, you can make them do anything you want." Take a look at everybody living in fear today. Everybody's absolutely terrified over a virus that has a greater than 99% survival rate. So when I look at the battles that we're facing in this school district, I think about my oldest boy that came home for the first time. He's a sixth grader. In his school career, came home and said, "Best first day ever, Mom." And has continued to look forward to going to school, because I removed him from public school. All three of my boys are now in private school. So we're going to work to make sure that the money follows the kids 100% going forward. Because if my kids are that much happier in a private school, that's where I want them. Final quote, from our Constitution. "It is impossible for a law which violates the Constitution to be valid. All laws repugnant to the Constitution are null and void." That is from Marbury versus Madison.
Jean Mary and Krista Ewer, you're on deck.
Jean Mary, Germantown. Before reviewing and potentially changing any COVID mitigation plan, we need to keep in mind the daily misinformation coming from Fauci, the administration, and the media. Recall the various definitions of herd immunity and the level for flattening the curve. Both of these are still moving targets. What about no masks? Yes, masks? No masks? Two masks? Three masks, if you can stand it? Scientists have repeatedly told us that those who have had the COVID virus have 13% to 27% greater immunity than provided by vaccines. And yet, they are labeled unvaccinated and required to get the vaccine anyway. But those on Capitol Hill are exempt? Democrat socialists have told us for years that Baltic countries have healthcare systems way ahead of ours that we need to replicate. And yet now the CDC tells us we cannot trust Denmark's well-documented, published scientific study of thousands of individuals demonstrating that there is no benefit to general masking. Media headlines tout inflated statistics that are generally discredited within hours or quietly disappear. Or they provide frightening percentages that have no meaning. A 300% increase in cases is scary, but 300% of what? Seven or 700? Has anyone noticed we have not heard anything about the seasonal flu for nearly two years? Can it be that COVID testing is not always able to distinguish between the two? Or are the federal monetary incentives for medical facilities treating COVID too attractive for total honesty about COVID versus the seasonal flu? We know for a fact that the latter has happened. Now we know that Fauci lied about gain-of-function research in Wuhan and his role in funding that for years. He now implies the research was necessary to be ready for developing vaccines for this kind of virus. Okay. Has anyone heard of a vaccine coming out of the Wuhan lab? After all these years, it has not come up with a vaccine for SARS, let alone for COVID. So what is the truth about gain-of-function research? Biden repeatedly said if we got the vaccine, we didn't need to mask, and he promised there would never be a vaccine mandate. Need I elaborate? We are told to follow the science, except when the science does not support the current media political agenda. As a result, our lives are in constant turmoil over threats of mandates, vaccines, masks, social distancing, lockdowns, and boosters, and passports. Can we at least count on the integrity of our school board and trust that the mitigation plan approved at the last school board meeting will stand? So we can get on with living our lives and reclaim the freedoms promised by our Constitution. Thank you.
Before I begin, do you want to address the signs that are being flapped up as people are speaking?
Yes, can we please stop pulling up the signs and editorializing during the people speaking? That would be appreciated. And then on deck, we have Chad Mattson.
My name is Krista Ewer from Germantown School District. I'm a mother of three children in the Germantown School District. And I'm going to speak about the July 19th Board meeting. We discussed that curriculum, teacher in-service material, and staff meeting material should be posted on the school board website. So far, some of the curriculum has been posted. I saw that more was added today. It's still missing all middle school, all SEL from the elementary school, multiple other areas. So how do we speed up this process? That's my question. Then with regard to the in-service and staff meeting material, I did notice from the July 19th meetings in the minutes, it says, "The Board discussed reviewing in-service material prior to in-services." But if you go back and listen to the video, Bob had said that all in-service material and all staff meeting material should be posted in the spirit of transparency. And his words were, "Let's cast a wide net." So far, I've not seen any of this material posted on the website. When can we expect to see that starting to be posted? This is important to me, because I've already found controversial material in my son's classroom. My husband and I are currently working with the principal and superintendent Stausland to hopefully have that resolved and removed. In addition, when I found this material, requested the curriculum for that class, I was charged a fee for that curriculum per page. Since it's supposed to be on the website, I don't understand why I'm being charged. It's a small fee, but still, if we're looking for curriculum and transparency, why are parents being charged for that information? And in the spirit of transparency and building trust between the administration and parents, I request that all FOIA's, and this will help our paper problem be filled digitally if possible. This saves the school time, money, resources for everybody involved. If you can just email the document over, do a free WeTransfer, there's options out there on how to get this material out to parents without having to print out pages and pages of paperwork. Again, thank you for the work that you've done, helping us build this transparency. I know it's still a work in progress, but we need to keep our eye on it and make sure it's still moving forward in the right direction. Thank you.
Chad and then Monica Curtis.
Hello, my name is Chad Mattson. I live in Germantown. I have kids within this district, both under 12 years of age. You may be aware that 12 years of age is the threshold for getting vaccinated at this point in time. I heard a really good term earlier, integrity. Now, I have to talk about that word. We have a board here, Mr. Loth specifically, who in May had stated excitedly that we don't even follow the rules when it came to the mask mandate within the schools. That's troubling, because we look at what's happening right now with the busing situation, where we have a national mandate. And this board, yes, there is a national mandate. There absolutely is on public transportation. I thought we weren't going to have peanut gallery conferences.
Our buses are private.
There is a national mandate. The DPI has stated that you can face issues with not enforcing that mandate. Now, to tell students that it's optional when there is a rule in place is telling students that if you don't like the rules, you don't have to follow them. I call into question integrity. But the other things I want to talk about today is we're making decisions based on feeling. We're making decisions based on propaganda. We're not making decisions based on the American Academy of Pediatrics. We're not making decisions based on Children's Hospital Network. We're not making decisions based on what the physicians recommend. These are people who have spent their entire lives working towards keeping our children safe and healthy. You're making decisions based on things that are incorrect and wrong. Now, I provided a giant binder of data back in May. Mr. Stausland said he held on to it for you. I hope you reviewed that. If you did not, or you're unwilling to look at that information, I question what will it take? Right now in Florida, they're seeing record numbers of children dying and being hospitalized. Is that what it's going to take for our children to be hospitalized, for our children to die before you act? Because if that's the case, I've also spoken to attorneys. And attorneys say then we have incurred damages. And we have legal recourse at that point, not only against the school district, not only against the board, but each of you. And I will tell you this, because I am here for the kids. If one of the people from the Politically Motivated No Left Turn in Education Wisconsin Group, if one of their kids gets hurt from this, I will help them hold you responsible. And it's great that you laugh at that. It's great that you laugh at our children's health. That is a terrible way to look at the world. Now Nurse Mamiac was here back in April and presented the same data that I presented, and then stated that masking should be optional. I had to question why, and she said that Dr. Dirk Reinhardt from Ascension had told her that we would be at herd immunity by now. We are not. So it is time to reevaluate based on scientific data, not on feelings, not on propaganda, not on people who laugh at me for trying to protect the children. Thank you.
Monica and then Kevin Curtis.
Hi, I'm Monica Curtis. I live in Germantown. And my husband and I have two kids ages six and four, under the age of 12, so they can't get vaccinated, in the Germantown School District. I want to first say that I'm very angry that the schools are no longer notifying parents of new COVID cases. We are still in a global pandemic. And if my children have been exposed, I, as their mother, have a right to know. I'm also here, once again, to ask you to make masks mandatory for school. I know people have said in the past, like, oh, you know, the child case numbers are really low, this isn't really affecting the kids, we haven't really seen much last year. But has no one ever considered that the reason the child cases were so low last year is because we made them wear masks? I mean, honestly, it's like when someone sees you buy Head and Shoulders at the store, and they're like, "But you don't have dandruff." And you look at them and go, "Exactly. The masks work. What is it going to take for you to listen to the experts and follow CDC guidelines, really?" I mean, honestly, I want to know, like, if you guys could just tell us how long it's going to take, because I'm exhausted, we're exhausted. I don't want to see any of our kids get sick, go on respirators, or God forbid, die. So if you guys could, like, let us know when you're planning to actually do something, I'd very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Kevin and then Lynn Carey.
Hello, my name is Kevin Curtis. As you see, my wife and I have two kids in the Germantown School District, ages six and four. Still under the age to get the vaccine right now, unfortunately. I'm looking at the data around us, and I'm looking at, and I'm seeing a trend. I'm seeing that it's coming towards us. I see that all the school districts around us are getting into that high range again. That high range where it is dangerous for our kids to go to school. West Bend is almost there. They're at 91. We said 100's high. Meckwan is at 114. They're requiring masks now because of how dangerous it is in their schools. Cedarburg's at 103. Hartford's at 125. And Slinger is the highest, at 146. These are the guidelines that you put in place of how we should handle it. And we are already seeing, one week into the school year, highs everywhere. Already in the seven days we've had school, there have been 45 cases of COVID in our school district. Seven days. I'm going to bring back something that I keep on talking about. I keep on talking about Washington County, Tennessee. They have about the same size county in terms of both area and population as we do. Their first week, they had 41 cases. After their first month, they had to close the school. None of us want that. We don't want our kids to be out of school. We did that last year. It was tough on all of us. We need to work together to get us in a place where we will be safe, and we will protect our kids, and we will keep the schools open. Two schools in Wisconsin have already closed. It boggles the mind that we cannot come together on this cause and work together to help our kids. I want to bring up a couple of things. I've heard the Constitution be brought up a couple of times, and I want to make two quotes. One from the Declaration of Independence. There's an order to which the way Jefferson said these things. "Life, then liberty, then pursuit of happiness." In the preamble, there is a key word. In the preamble of the Constitution, before the rules are in place, that we are there to promote the general welfare. That means the health of everyone. Everyone in this school, everyone in this county, everyone in this district. And I'm going to bring up one, I'm going to bring up the, the last quote I'm going to bring up is actually from the Bible. It's from Leviticus. It's an older book, I know. But, Leviticus 13:45. "Anyone with a defiling disease must wear torn cloth, let their hair be unkempt, and cover the lower parts of their face, and cry out, 'Unclean, unclean.'" The Bible is telling us what to do here, too. It is telling us to wear masks, to keep this defiling disease away from everyone. Please, change the rules. Thank you.
Lynn and then Scott. Lynn, sorry. And then Scott Hafley.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Lynn.
Lynn Carey, Germantown. I'm here tonight to speak to our collective responsibility in keeping the children within our schools and our communities safe through masking. As a pediatric nurse, I cared for children in the hospital. It was not unusual to see children hospitalized because of the decisions of those who were charged to keeping them safe. People who drove drunk when it was well-known and proven that drinking and driving leads to harm. People who left medications or drugs within easy reach of children when we know children are curious and put everything in their mouths. People who left children unattended and children were hurt. While some of these are examples may be seen as accidents, it is no accidents when studies and evidence and expert recommendations that masks work and help keep children safe are not followed. The American Academy of Pediatric recommends universal masking because, and I quote, "A significant portion of the student population is not yet eligible for vaccines. And masking has proven to reduce transmission of the virus and to protect those who are not vaccinated." Research has shown that when schools are open with masking and other safety measures, community transmission does not generally increase. And our local children's hospital and healthcare providers are asking people, including children, to mask. This is well documented, not opinion, not ideology. So what informs each of your decisions? Why are you neglecting, denying, and not acting on this information? I cannot understand why you, as elected officials, as parents, as community leaders, neglect your duty to keep children as safe as they can be during this pandemic. Second, as a taxpayer, I have great concern about your actions. Insurance companies are beginning to question whether they will continue to offer coverage if school districts do not require students and staff to wear masks. And as we know from local TV reporting, Germantown may be held liable for violating federal rules that govern federal transportation guidelines. And third, as a homeowner, I do not want to see my values go down as families choose to live in Germantown or school districts like Whitefish Bay, Shorewood, Wauwatosa, and Meckwan. I do not want to see one taxpayer dollar spent because of your ideology. As a nurse, when I do not follow what is in the best interest of the child or what experts recommend, I am held responsible. I hold you to the same standard.
Scott and then we have.
Scott Hafley, Germantown.
Hang on, Scott. And then we have Sandy P. A. Go ahead, Scott.
Thank you for the time tonight. So if you're usually bored by numbers, then these next three minutes, you can take a nap or something. But I'm the guy that's always up here talking about the budget. As a matter of fact, I think 18 months I've been coming here talking to you, right around this month. I started last year, a year and a half ago. And just a couple of comments, okay? The Finance Committee to me is the most important committee, okay? If we don't have the money to do things, then we can't do things we want to do. We can't do special things for anybody. So it's all about the Finance Committee to me. It drives everything, all right? That being said, I am hearing, and I'm sure we're going to have a report from Brittany and her team on the 27th, that we are going to have a close-to-balance or a balanced budget, which regardless of what anyone up there thinks, I think is the first time in several years. So I want to commend Brittany for that and her team for getting that done, because a balanced budget to me is extremely important. I know we have the guy that's going to help us with the debt. That's all fantastic news. So let's take that, let's move forward, and let's not overspend and overborrow like we have done in the past. And I know I've debated several of you on stage about that. We have overspent and we have overborrowed in the past. Nobody can really deny that. So let's move on and let's not do it anymore. Let's stick to a budget. Let's stick to the guidance she gives you. Let's work together, and let's make it better for everybody so we don't have to have these discussions. As a matter of fact, one of the reasons that busing has become an issue is we had to cut revenue to balance a budget, and we are seeing some of the repercussions of decisions we made years ago. So, and some of you were involved in those decisions. So again, we don't want to see this happening. Let's live within a budget. Let's figure it out, and let's move forward. Just a couple of other quick things. I'm personally waiting for a financial resolution with PRA and our contractor on the punch list. I keep hearing about things dripping and things falling. And I know that everybody up there is disappointed as I am, okay? But someone's culpable, and it's not us. We hired people in good faith to do a job for us. I think, personally think they screwed up a bunch of stuff. And I know not all of it is privy to my information or anything, but let's get this done. Let's hold them accountable. Certainly not as taxpayers. It's not our fault. Let's push on. Let's get some sort of a financial agreement done. Let's do the work. Let's fix everything and let's move on, okay? The final thing I'll say is I want to say that I don't expect all, any of you up there to be perfect. None of us are perfect. And I respect the fact that if some of you are chiming in a little bit more, are willing to take the position that the others don't feel, and I'm encouraged by that, seeing a little bit of dissent. I think it's healthy, all right? Much better than the 7-0 votes, 7-0 votes that I saw from this board for a number of years. So I want to thank you for that. Keep working. Keep our kids, you know, in schools and safe. Thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Sandy and then we have Abby Dzinski.
Sandy P. A. from Germantown. I have questioned for the school board members and parents that question all the medical professionals that have spent years and years studying in their specialty fields. If we don't trust science or recommendations of those people in the medical fields, why do we teach various science courses in our schools? With our budget concerns, wouldn't it make sense to eliminate these expensive courses? The parents opposing masks and those of you on the board have repeatedly proven that facts of science don't apply to health emergency. And any necessary information to side with your beliefs can just be obtained through the internet. So why have science in our curriculum? The parents claim that masks cause carbon dioxide poisoning, contrary to scientific facts proving otherwise. So if we're not going to believe those that have degree upon degree in science, why promote science in our schools? Vaccines have been proven to protect or lessen the symptoms of COVID. Yet those that oppose them say we don't want them because we have the freedom to choose what we put in our bodies. My generation lined up to get the smallpox and polio vaccines because they were mandated and required to attend school. Guess what? They were not only new, but we had no idea what was in them. Not only did they work, but they eradicated those diseases. But hey, those vaccines were developed by scientists. What did they know? Germantown supposedly promotes education for our schoolchildren, yet turns up its nose when education does not support adults' personal and political opinions. What are we teaching our children? I'd like to ask all of you, do you go to the doctor if you're sick? Why? It's science. Are you required to wear a mask at medical facilities? Or do you storm in without a mask, citing it's your right as when you speak at this microphone? Do they let you enter? If you don't trust science, why are you even at the doctor? Look it up on the internet. I sincerely hope that those refusing to accept the scientific data on COVID never show up and take a hospital bed from someone in a non-COVID medical crisis. As is happening in other parts of our country. You lost that right when you rejected science over your rights to do what you do to your body. I am extremely angry that you would use your children and the children of others to promote your agenda. In closing, in light of what the board has been doing in direct conflict to scientific data on COVID, I recommend they back their actions by removing all science courses from our curriculum. Since it appears scientists and medical authorities are not necessary to make educated decisions in regards to health safety in our schools and our communities. Thank you.
Abby and then we have Pam Schultz.
Abby Dzinski, Germantown.
Abby Dzinski, Germantown, student of Kennedy Middle School. I'm here to talk about transportation for students and the rules for facial coverings. I have to make this short so I will not waste my time or yours. It is good that we have the school buses for students that need it as parents/guardians can't take their child to school. But what is not great, in my opinion, is the masks. Students should have to wear facial coverings. It is not only to keep you safe, it keeps others safe as well. I have watched these past meetings, and I was quite frustrated when I found out masks were made optional. That's not okay. The reason I have the opinion is that masks aren't to keep people protected. I have a brother. He had a kidney transplant in the year of 2015, and he has a compromised immune system. So I wear a KN-95 every day to keep him, myself, and others safe. If my brother was healthy, yes, I would still wear a mask for the same reason, to protect others. I may be young, but I do have opinions, and I'm not scared to share them. Thank you for your time.
Pam, and then Diane Peterson.
So I'm going to start with telling you a tale of two schools, both similar sizes. They're in the South. The first eight days of school in Lexington One, they had no masks. They had 342 active cases and 2,567 students quarantined. In Richland Two, same-size school, they did have a mask mandate. They had 27 active cases and only 116 quarantined. So without masks, what are these quarantined students going to do in the Germantown school system since there's no congruent virtual learning? Pediatric numbers of COVID are dramatically increasing. Hospitalizations of children are five times higher in August than they were compared to June. Hospitalization rates among non-vaccinated 12- to 17-year-olds are 10 times higher than the vaccinated 12- to 17-year-olds. In Texas, there were 51,904 student cases, which is about seven per thousand, and 13,026 staff cases, which is 16 per thousand. In the same timeframe last year, when they were using masks, there were only 1,742 student cases. That's a huge increase for the same timeframe. The AAP reports that 1 in 4 testing positive are children right now. And they estimate that up more than 251,781 new pediatric cases, and that's likely an underestimate. One in every 125 pediatric cases need hospitalization. Thirty-three percent of those end up in the ICU. With the current rate, we will need 6,800 PICU beds or pediatric ICU beds, and the country only has 4,500 beds. Normally, Peds hospitals operate at about 80% capacity, some days higher, some days lower, but allows the flexibility. Across 39 children's hospitals, 42% of the nights, they were at 95% capacity. The consequences for hospitals when they're above 90% include patient safety, quality of care, the experience of patient and family, rejected transports, ER crowding, staff stress, which leads to decreased staffing. We learned last year that mitigation strategies and masking worked. We had a great year. You should be really proud. There was very little in-school transmission. Most of the transmission was outside of the schools. Schools need a layered plan in place. Ventilation, HEPA filtration, and masks are the most effective. But they also need plans in place for testing, contact tracing, quarantine, isolation, accurate reporting, and supporting kids in quarantine through distance learning. I believe that Germantown High School, or Germantown School District can make the right recommendations. They did last year. It was a good year. We had very little school transmission. It was all community transmission. Why can't we do the same thing this year and protect our kids?
Diane, and then we have Alyssa Paulo.
Diane Peterson, Richfield. Good evening. We all just said the Pledge of Allegiance, and I hope board members and everyone in this audience truly stand with it in your hearts. The United States is a durable country, and democracy has certain set values. I believe in time, we will emerge stronger, we'll wake up, and we'll dust ourselves off, primarily because we are a benevolent country. We spent this past weekend remembering 9/11, and again felt the horror, but also the positive spirit as Americans when we came together on 9/12. That was 20 years ago. I wonder how we got to the point that classifying people as oppressors and oppressed. That never would have held water on 9/11 or 9/12. Why does it now? Why are you allowing your students, who were not alive at that time, to become so hateful of America? Why are you allowing teachers to teach hateful things and indoctrinate your students? All I can ask is why? I want to continue to believe, as board members, you did not consciously authorize CRT, Marxism, SCL, and other such curriculum. But now, knowing what it is, now knowing what it is, I hope you continue to reconsider its devastating outcomes. You know what the parents are concerned about. We need your accountability. Your actions in the future will tell us all where you really stand. Please don't take the racism bait. America is not racist. We evaluate what we have done over our history and then make corrections, as you've seen. No longer are there slaves of property owners in America. But I fear some people perhaps are becoming slaves to government by not working, yet taking government payouts. All I can ask is when will they know they have become slaves to the government? I'm optimistic in the long term that school board members in the United States will come to their senses, but pessimistic in the short term, as it seems DPI and teachers' unions are pushing anti-American agendas. That will continue unless the minds of board members change or there's a change of board members. Do you support Western democratic values or Marxist tyranny? Will you stand by your oath to the Constitution, as I mentioned at the last meeting? Marxism and communism always fails, falls on itself, and fails its people. So this terrible Marxist curriculum will be eradicated by you or by future board members, if necessary. And I hope we have some of those candidates in the office here. The buck stops with you. You make the decisions. Lastly, we all know America by nature is very optimistic in the long term. Thank you.
Alyssa, and then we have Jodi Graf.
I want to discuss transparency in the classrooms. Since the May board meeting, myself and other parents have been advocating for more transparency for what is occurring in the classrooms and the curriculum. We have asked for the full curriculum and lesson plans to be made available on the district website. When reviewing the website prior to this meeting, I am disappointed with the lack of curriculum that has been posted. We only have curriculum for 12 high school classes, no middle school courses, and none of the social studies curriculum for the elementary schools. We also do not have access to the second-step SCL curriculum that is currently used in the elementary schools. In the spirit of transparency and building trust amongst the parents, I am asking you to please do your due diligence and continue to get curriculum in its entirety posted to the website. Placing these materials on the website will also decrease district costs from duplicate requests. Further, I continue to ask for all teacher in-service materials to be made readily available on the district website as well. As for the busing issues related to masks, I like to reference public transportation as defined in Section 5302 of Title 49 of the United States Code. In this code, it explicitly states that public transportation does not include school bus service. Therefore, it is up to the district to make the decisions and not federal or state government. I have heard from other parents some of the horrific incidents that have happened on the buses, students fighting, racial slurs being used, students vaping, and other inappropriate behavior. This is unacceptable, and I hope that the district will appropriately discipline these students. This behavior should not be tolerated, and when actions like this go unpunished, it festers resentment and lowers morale for the students. Lastly, I want to thank the board for their decision thus far on the COVID mitigation issues. I feel you have listened to both sides of this argument and have given a lot of thought. But our children are not lepers. They are not meant to be masked and shunned from society like diseased animals. Children need to feel love, compassion, build positive peer relationships, and that comes with seeing faces and reading emotions and social cues. So please, hold true to your decisions. Do not allow your decisions to be swayed by bullying, intimidation, and threats from lawyers. The majority of this community supports you, and we have shown up, meeting after meeting, to stay invested in our schools and to keep our children here. Thank you.
Jodi, and then we have Lynn Hirsch.
Thank you. Jodi Graf, Germantown. I too would like to thank you for your continued commitment to the families of this community and their medical freedom of choice. Since we apparently are doing Groundhog's Day with these meetings, I'll repeat that no one is the god over another's body, and of course, no one is being denied the chance to wear a mask. So let's be reminded that the CDC does not mandate anything. Recommendations are never enforcements, and mask mandates are a violation of freedom as well as a severe safety and emotional health concern for so many people, most especially our students who need to smile, breathe fresh air, and engage in healthy social interaction. As always, the action of Germantown School District's student body and its overwhelming choice to not mask continues to speak for itself in support of freedom against the boogeyman risk, which amounts to a fraction of a percent. Of course, COVID is real. Of course, numbers are going to go up and down for RSV and various flus during back-to-school flu season, as they always do. That's why it's called flu season. But never have we ever decided something with survival rates over 99% require masking the planet. Districts may inform families of guidelines and school statistics, but they may not enforce or mandate anything upon their teachers, staff, or students. Health choices are not for any institution to decide for a person, and to repeat something that was said tonight, but from a different point of view, I am extremely angry that anyone would use children to promote their political agenda. United we stand, divided we fall. It's amazingly terrifying how my body, my choice, and morality together has quickly flipped into divisive hatred and tyrannical force, isn't it? And so we must say, not here in Germantown. Let's continue to restore positive and exciting energy into the Germantown community and school district. I know I'm personally excited to continue being a part of the solution with you all, as we each contribute to ensuring GSD doesn't just look to what other districts are doing, but instead trailblazes, and as an exemplary district by which to be followed, focusing on education, not politics, empowering and inspiring students to succeed. Thank you, Germantown School Board, for staying true to freedom of choice now and always.
Lynn, and then we have Melanie Smythe.
Okay, Lynn Hirsch, Germantown. Judicial Watch, through the Freedom of Information Act, has received 12 pages of records showing the American Federation of Teachers and the National Education Association influenced the CDC Director and White House with their own embargoed vaccine research, as well as the school reopening policy. The records show that these educational unions colluded with a government agency to fit their own political agenda. Additionally, the CDC Director, Walensky, states that she used the unions' language in the CDC's school reopening policy. So who's leading who here? This collusion obviously is what sows the seeds of distrust, and how is that for integrity? Numerous epidemiological experts have argued that cycle thresholds, CTs, are an important metric by which patients, the public, and policymakers can make more informed decisions about how infectious and sick an individual with a positive COVID-19 test might be. These experts compiled three data sets with officials from the states of Massachusetts, New York, and Nevada that conclude up to 90% of the people who tested positive did not carry a virus. An appeals court in Portugal has ruled that the PCR process is not reliable test for SARS-CoV-2, and therefore, any enforced quarantine based on those test results is unlawful. And don't we all love the "rules for thee but not for me" crowd? How many times with government bureaucrats have we seen them pushing for mandates or restrictions in regard to COVID, and then disregard those very same rules for themselves? Biden's vaccine executive order applies to the folks in the executive branch. It doesn't apply to the legislative or the judicial branch. Members of the Congress and their staff do not have to comply with the mandates. So 100 million Americans may have to deal with it, but they don't. But of course, they're perfectly willing to impose it on you, just not for themselves. Biden said vaccines and masks are not about freedom or personal choice, and he told the unvaccinated to be prepared to pay. I don't like being threatened. I should always have the freedom to choose not to be a guinea pig, hence the new Nuremberg Trials, which are just beginning. When do we become subject of King Joe Biden and lose our inalienable rights given to us by God, not governments? Flipping out over a virus that will never be cured, which nearly has a 100% survival rate for the majority of age groups is pathetic. We are becoming everything our forefathers feared, and it's time to stop the fear mongering. Remember, a government that can give you everything and make edicts is a government that can also take it all away and deem citizens expendable. Please keep masks optional. Thank you for your time.
Melanie, and then Lauren Harris.
Good evening. So much fear and anger and anxiety that we hear. I truly feel bad for the people who fear the virus, which has a 99.7% recovery rate for most healthy people under 70, and it's much higher for children. Complicit in this fear are the media, public health officials, government entities, and medical organizations who are enthralled to the pharmaceutical companies, follow the dollars. Per the CDC, bullying is any unwanted aggressive behavior by another that involves an observed or perceived power imbalance and is repeated multiple times. The constant drumbeat for nearly two years of these agencies, government departments, are creating this atmosphere of fear, and it is just unconscionable. But it's not new. Here's why we shouldn't believe a word that Tony Fauci says. In 2009, Cheryl Atkinson, an independent journalist, uncovered the H1N1 hoax. The NIH, CDC, and WHO were all pushing the swine flu pandemic. They claimed that there were thousands of cases in the U.S., but they had secretly stopped counting the cases. The main reason that routine lab testing of samples was showing that there was no swine flu or any other kind of flu. Instead of backing down, the CDC started elevating the stated numbers of cases, claiming up to 22 million, when there were only 98,000 hospitalizations. The reason for doing this was to push a new vaccine, which turned out to kill people, and was then pulled from the market. Does any of this sound familiar? This doesn't include his involvement in 1989 with AIDS and the drug AZT, a drug approved without testing that caused thousands harm and a tremendous amount of anxiousness for all of their loved ones. So why should we actually trust Tony Fauci when he has this track record and he seems to be repeating it? Here's a few issues I've found about masks that have unintended consequences. Cavities, facial deformities, acne, increased potentially risk of COVID because of recirculation of the disease within the mask, bacterial pneumonia, immune suppression, germophobia, creating people who are antisocial because they are afraid, their fear makes them afraid, and so they lash out at other people. And then the breathing of toxins that are embedded in the fabrics, which outgas and people then breathe in. So I think we should be focusing on staying healthy, being well, helping each other, and standing up to the bullies. Thank you.
Hi, Lauren Harris from Germantown. I think the mask should be optional. The virus is an aerosol. In other words, the virus is smaller than the holes in the mask. And by the way, that blue stuff that's on the mask causes cancer. It's listed. I see people touching surfaces and then touching their face. Surgeons and doctors have warned about the unsanitary use of the mask. Doctors such as Dr. McCullough, Dr. Simon Gold, Dr. Tenpenny, however, these doctors and many more are being censored. Rebreathing your carbon dioxide and your bacteria is not healthy. Come on, this is common sense. There was two children in China that actually died because they were wearing a mask running. I, for one, cannot wear the mask. In the beginning, I did wear a mask because I was scared, just like everybody else, but I--
I had a horrible, horrible sinus infection and some lung damage and my doctor said, "You can't wear the mask." I know another person that's been wearing a mask and he got lung damage and his doctor said, "Don't wear the mask." Come on, it's common sense. The virus has mutated over 100 times. The virus is getting weaker. That's why we have plenty of strains. Flu viruses want to live so they're going to mutate in different ways. We're trying to guess what strain of the flu is going to go around so we can get the flu vaccine and be so-called protected while we get thermocell and aluminum injected in our brains? The virus is not going away, okay? And we're always going to have the virus. Your best defense is your immune system. If you're sick, you stay home. That's what we should be stressing to our kids in school. You don't come to school sick. Use common sense. Stop touching your face. I see everybody touching their face, touching surfaces, and then they touch the mask. Throw the mask in your car. Put your mask back on. Hang it in your mirror. I mean, this is really stupid. Natural immunity is much better. It lasts longer, according to the study in Israel. Getting a vaccine will require you to get booster shots every six months. The coronavirus has a 99.97% recoverable rate, less than 1% are dying of this virus. We are dying more of cancer. I know people that are dying of cancer and they're getting rejected because they haven't got the shot for their treatment. We aren't meant to be masked. We aren't meant to be living in a sanitary world. What is this going to do to our immune systems? Thank you.
Kim Grant, and then on deck we have Alex Harden.
Hi, I'm Kim Grant from Germantown. Concerning fully vaccinated, will continue to wear my mask, will continue to social distance because that's my choice. Everyone is focusing on that we are not dying or whatever, but I'm talking to you as a person who has been now diagnosed as a long hauler, which means after having COVID, I still have fatigue. It has escalated my heart issues, my epilepsy, and I have now lifelong, lifelong now complications from pre-existing conditions that I had before. Mine is that I have a choice. I have a three-year-old grandson, an 18-month-old grandson, and a one-year-old, and each and every one of them wear their mask because we made it fun. It was not a punishment. It wasn't to separate you. So now, when I walk out the door, my grandson says, "Nina, grab your mask because we have to go." It's all in how you present stuff. If you want to present things as a punishment, then that's how children are going to feel. That's what they're going to look. That's how they're going to interpret it. But if you know what it is for the safety of the life and the longevity of your grandmother, that puts a whole nother spin on it. We want to wonder why we're having an uprising in our fights on our buses. All those students had to do was look at a few of our school board meetings at the threats, the intimidation from everybody, not just one side, everybody, which I go back to the stance that I said again in March. We're so far left and we're so far right, nobody is teaching our children that there is a middle ground. There is a compromise and you have to understand just because, and believe me, sorry for being emotional because I just lost another friend of mine at 4:30 yesterday afternoon from Corona. She died. Yep, got one right now that's possibly not going to make it. So excuse me that I may have more personal knowledge of people that I love that I have lost, but what we're presenting to our children is what you're seeing now in the school system. So if you want to see the disarray on the bus, if you want to see the disarray in the children, it's because of what you are presenting to them. So because I don't make wearing a mask a punishment to my grandchildren or anything in our family, they don't see it as a punishment. We get our disposable mask, we get a new one every time we get ready to go out, so there's no chance of it being unsanitary. But what I'm not going to play with is my life, my children's lives, or anybody else's life, and that's my choice.
Alex, and then we have Jessica Chapman.
Thank you. Alex Harden from Colgate First. I just wanted to thank everyone on the board for standing by your position on masks at the last meeting. I appreciate that and I sent an email to everyone. Hopefully you got it. I also sent an email to Tracy apologizing for the way you were treated at the end of the meeting and that was not cool. I hope you saw that. So now onto this. It feels like we're in a rut. We show up every two, four weeks here and we talk, some of us talk about facts and data about why masks are no good. Some of us talk about maybe facts, a lot of stories about why masks are good, but we're getting nowhere. It seems like we have a lot more important issues than masks to talk about like education. Furthermore, given that the vast majority of students and staff aren't wearing masks, I think that does tell you where the community stands on this. So it gets me wondering, why masks? Why are we still talking about masks and why are people still insisting that we wear masks, given the vast array of things that are clearly more dangerous than COVID or than these coronaviruses? Far fewer kids died in 2020 and thus far in 2021 than previous years, which is interesting. Other interesting numbers related to unfortunately kids dying. In 2016, according to the New England Journal of Medicine, fires and burns accounted for 340 deaths in children. So why not require fire extinguishers to be carried by all children? In fact, Brett and Brian, I'd like to file a formal request that we purchase and equip every single student with a fire extinguisher. It's only logical and I'm as serious as a Joe Biden dramatic whisper. Car crashes account for 4,074 deaths in children. There's a surefire way to make sure your kids don't die from a car crash. Don't get on a car. So why aren't we talking about that? Again, around 350 kids died from COVID in the first year. These numbers are way bigger than that, yet I don't see anyone demanding action against these things. Suicide. Let's make all the parents' hearts stop for a second. 2,335 deaths from suicide in kids. That's seven times the number of deaths from COVID in the first year. You know, maybe Brenda, ain't no grift like the racism grift, O'Brien, should stop trying to make kids believe that they're either inherently victims or oppressors. Maybe we should stop isolating kids and maybe we should stop making them strap ridiculous cloths on their face every day and let them actually engage with other human beings like they were designed to do. Drug overdoses and poisoning, 761 deaths in 2016. So again, there are much bigger fish to fry, it seems, than COVID. You know, and some parents will probably say, "Well, we have seatbelts. You know, we have Smokey the Bear to prevent against fires. We have all these different things." Well, we have those things for coronaviruses too. Hand washing, staying home when you're sick. We're not going to get rid of this coronavirus, just like we've gotten rid of none of the other coronaviruses that have ever come to this country or to this world, including via vaccines, which we've tried and haven't worked. So again, I just ask why masks and why don't we focus on some of these other things? Thanks.
Jessica, and then Ed Hertz.
Hi, I'm Jessica Chapin from Colgate. I'm glad you asked, Alex. I have answers for you. Just kidding. I really am here to support requiring masks in the school. It's just become so politicized and so us/them. I think we're all getting our sources, we're looking at different sources, like what this part of the room is reading and this part of the room is reading seem to be very different. I would love to sit down together and look at peer-reviewed research published in journals. I mean, looking at what MIT is doing, what Mayo is doing. When it comes down to it, the research just supports the benefit of the mask to decrease the numbers of COVID cases. It's not going to prevent them. I think in terms of the relative risk, it's, you know, wearing a mask is relatively benign. There are negative pieces that come with it. I don't love wearing a mask, but eh, it's okay. I think the kids are less bothered by it than we might be ourselves. So I wish we could all read the same information. We can have our own opinions on it. I enjoy our own opinions on it. I appreciate what the board is doing and hearing all of this. Just another voice to support requiring masks. Thank you.
Welcome, Ed, and then Mickey Whitcomb.
Ed Hertz, longtime resident of Germantown. My three kids attended school here and my grandkids also attend. I'm a retired mechanical engineer, over 40 years of experience primarily in HVAC consulting industry. So with that, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I just have a few words to say. From previous discussions on masking, I observed a lot of emotions, primarily fear in many people in our community. Fear can be a good thing at times. For example, if you encounter a bear in the woods, it's good to fear that. Knowledge is knowing what to do when you've encountered that. Fear can be a bad thing for other aspects in our lives. For myself, I've had fears of speaking to a crowd in a public setting like this. I've faced my fears and head-on and have learned to deal with them. Similarly, with this masking issue, people are fearful of the unknown, but true science-based facts have shown that our fears are unfounded. I believe certain people in positions of power, i.e. government, have been and still are playing on our fears. Let's not succumb to those fears that they want us to believe. Knowledge-based decisions are always better than fear-based decisions. I'm reminded of a children's folk tale of Chicken Little. The sky is falling. The sky is falling. In today's times, Chicken Little is big government telling us the sky is falling. Common sense tells us the sky is not falling and we have nothing to fear. And from my previous experience in consulting industry, I just want to add several comments about masks on the market are nothing more than cheap air filters that do nothing. They actually do more harm than good. They capture the particles, airborne particles on the outside. So if, but they don't kill them. So if you grab the mask, you're more or less transferring those viruses to another surface. Plus the gas, they leak. Viruses are less than .3 microns in size per ashtray. Standard surgical masks are rated at removing 98% particles at three-microns. Your typical air filters in most HVAC systems are rated for MERV-8 or MERV-12 or 30% efficient.
Thank you.
Sorry, just closing. Thank you for keeping freedom, allowing parents to, parents are not birthing people as people in Kellin, Fornia would have. Masking choice and parental monitoring must be paramount. Thank you.
Mickey, and then Brad Sherrick.
No, it's Mikey.
Mikey, sorry.
Yeah, there's no C. All right. Mikey Whitcomb, Colgate, Wisconsin. I'm a father of three in Germantown and thanks for keeping it strong for, you know, our constitutional rights here by having it optional. I just can't believe we're still talking about this. No one's saying that we're, you know, you can't wear a mask, but taking our liberties away for your safety is not going to, you know, do good for most Americans because it'll cause more division in us. If you want to wear it, wear it. That's cool, right? But if I don't want to wear it, you can't make me. Why ain't nobody talking about every year, there's 30,000 to 60,000 people that die from the flu every year and nobody talks about the mask then? I mean, what are we doing here? This is fear mongering. It's just all it is. So let's live our life in peace and harmony and you do you, I'll do me, and we'll live on. All right? Thanks.
Next up is Brad, and then Elizabeth Green.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. First, I wanted to just correct something that was said before. Like I said, it wouldn't surprise me that we would have parents looking for loopholes in transportation laws, but I expect a little bit better from our board members. I looked on the Department of Transportation website. There's a FAQ page for the mask mandates. Are school bus operators and their passengers required to wear masks? Yes. School bus operators, including operations by public school districts and their passengers, are required to wear masks as defined by the order issued by the CDC. The order provides limited exemptions, blah, blah, blah. In an FAQ concerning the CDC order, the CDC states that passengers and drivers on school buses must wear a mask unless the driver is the only person on the bus. This requirement applies to all school buses, whether publicly or privately owned. That's not why I came to talk tonight, though. I have a couple observations about the COVID mitigation plan and I've shared these with the board and I appreciate Mr. Stausland for responding to my emails. I appreciate the data that's been shared. It's been cleaned up a little bit, getting rid of days that aren't in session has helped. There's still very little data shared with us. A five-day running total doesn't really help us understand what's going on. It doesn't show trends. We can't see where things are headed. There's no reason why you can't share every school day, whether it's on the website or give us an attachment if we wanted to look at it, but we can do better in that regard. I'd asked about getting data on the impact of quarantines and Mr. Stausland said that we weren't reporting it because quarantines are optional in many cases. That may be the case, but we still have students out with COVID. We have students out on quarantine and getting some information on how often that's happening would help us understand how things are going. So again, don't see why we couldn't be reporting that. My last comment, and I had made this in an email as well. Our mitigation plan caps out at a place where we never have a status where masks would be required. So our mitigation plan essentially says it can never get so bad that we would have to have masks. That seems somewhat illogical to me. I'm not going to suggest what we should be doing. The county data is not great. Obviously, the limited data we see from the schools is not great. I think something needs to change. I'll look forward to hearing your recommendations. Thank you.
Elizabeth.
Hi, just wanted to say thank you for all that you do for our community and I know your job must be incredibly difficult. I was really happy to hear that masks were optional this year. I was kind of disappointed to hear on Saturday that we're discussing making masks not optional. I just have a few questions. If masks were so effective, why do we still have COVID? I'm actually here because I was supposed to be at my college job tonight, but they require vaccination and I've already had COVID. There's a really interesting article on science.org from Israel that says having SARS-CoV-2 once confers much greater immunity than a vaccine. I know you're not requiring vaccines, but I just thought I'd throw that out there. Also, I'm a realtor in town and I can tell you, I know someone was threatening that people wouldn't want to move to Germantown unless we had a mask mandate, but that's not true. The opposite is true. I know people are really proud of our schools here and they purposely moved to Germantown. In fact, my family moved here from Maryland because of the school district, so thank you. So please stay strong. You're never going to please everybody. Just a few. Just a few fun science facts. Smallpox was eradicated because it cannot live in other animals. COVID unfortunately can live in animals. In fact, I don't know how many gorillas just came down with COVID in a zoo. I don't know if you've heard that story. But COVID's going to be here. I would just say that I, I can't believe the amount of fear that I hear coming to these meetings. People just need to be strong. Don't, don't be afraid. Our bodies are incredible machines. Keep up your immune system and you'll be fine. And really, I just think this should all be about the kids. I can't see how wearing an oppressive mask, which to me is dehumanizing, is going to help the children. I don't know how many deaths there have been of kids under nineteen, but I know the number is minuscule. They have incredible immune systems if they even get it. So anyway, stay strong and thank you.
Thank you. That is all for tonight. Moving on to item four, approval of the minutes, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, Board of Education and August thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, Joint Board of Education and Village of Germantown Board. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Those pass. Moving on to item five, Curriculum Committee, Mr. Stausland.
Yes, I'm going to actually hand it up to Mr. Pollock.
And I will hand it off to Ms. O'Brien.
Sure, I just wanted to update the board and it was in your back, board background on some of the pilots that we're doing this year in multiple areas across different levels. So on the board background, I've also included a timeline for these pilots, which include opportunities for ongoing, ongoing board updates as well as opportunities for parents to look at any materials that we would be recommending for adoption near the end of this school year.
So what, when would the public viewing be?
So I'm planning to get out some of the links and resources to share in September and October, so early, probably early October. And then we are planning to hold parent sessions on the resources that would be recommended the first quarter of twenty-twenty-two.
January, February?
January, February, yes, correct.
Thank you.
And so one of the things with, with those sessions, obviously, is they, as we get closer to that, we'll, we'll better define exactly what they, they might look like, how we can get information out to the parents, to the public for, for their attendance. Obviously, we'll, we'll come up with some guidelines and rules and those type of things to, to manage the sessions. And I, I think realistically, we certainly hope it's a success, however we ultimately define success. But I think also realistically that we may hit a couple bumps in the road and, and we'll learn from it. But the idea is that laying out the timeline of sharing the information, giving the, the parents, the public, the opportunity to, to review the information, to ask their questions, those type of things is a positive step forward. I'll just also add, since we're on this topic too, that Ms. O'Brien has shared, and I'll forward this on ultimately to the other curriculum committee members, some concerns from, from a parent or parents regarding a couple of the items on the pilot list so that you guys also are aware of it. It, it, you know, I'm thankful for that, being proactive and, and trying to share those concerns that may have just gone to, to Ms. O'Brien with the rest of us is ultimately whatever is going to be recommended is, is going to fall onto the curriculum committee to ultimately review and, and possibly make some recommendations to the board. I would also just note one other thing. You may have noticed the ad hoc has been removed from the committee name. So it was determined that we could kind of do that without any sort of board approval or board process as well. I know that's been brought up in the past a few times by a number of people.
Any further discussion?
Tracy, I want to thank you and the committee for, and also Brenda for doing this. I think this goes a long way in demonstrating our, our transparency with the community and our stakeholders. We heard a couple of comments tonight in the public citizens about more transparency, putting more curriculum on the website. I know there's curriculum on the website, but when do you think we'll have everything done?
Boy, I don't, I, I just met with Angie Packer today, who is the one who is putting up the links on the website. I don't have a definitive date at this time. We're just continuing to work on it and getting more and more online.
Do you think maybe in thirty days, forty-five days? Because absent that, we're just going to have a revolving door of moms and dads coming back here saying, what's taking us so long? And I understand this is a heavy left, I get that, so.
Yeah. I, I, I really don't have a timeline at this point. Again, I, we could continue making strides with it. I mean, if there's a definitive deadline, I, maybe first semester, at the end of first semester.
I know it would, it would assist me, maybe my colleagues on the board, if I'm a simple person, if we have a metric, that our metric's a hundred percent, where are we at today? Are we at twenty percent? We at thirty percent? Maybe start sharing that information so that at least we know that we're progressing because I see things on the website. But that really doesn't tell me anything in terms of how, how much of the total are we on? I would welcome that.
Yeah, okay, I could provide that update.
Maybe, maybe what we do for the next board meeting is, is have an agenda item and try to get a high-level plan together for that. If, if it's by percentage or by school or, you know, whatever was most appropriate to kind of lay that out and that way, and, and share it. To Bob's point, you don't want that revolving door where folks, as long as we're hitting the metrics that we've, we've kind of put out there, you know, maybe that will avoid that as long as we're hitting those and sharing the information.
Cool. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any further comments? Mike?
I don't know if this is all on you, Brenda, but I guess I thought that this was going to be teachers posting a syllabus and/or an outline of all of their lessons for the school year. And I, I think that's, I'm not sure what each teacher has and what they're teaching from each day. Maybe a new teacher might only be a week or two out, but I think those items certainly could be posted, you know, in good faith. And of course, the PDF or whatever the, the posting is would become longer as the school year goes by. Some things will be in the past, but you know, what's yet to come. And that way, parents, you know, can see what sort of subjects, you know, their students might be learning in class. So I, I don't know if we yet know what transparency is here, but I, I think the teachers must be working from something. They've got their own notes.
Correct. And maybe, Mr. Pollock, you and I and the curriculum committee can have a conversation around what is curriculum and what is the expectation of being posted online? And I'd like maybe Mr. Stausland, if you could be involved in that conversation as well. I think we need some definition around what are the expectations of what's online and what wouldn't be online. I've kind of created my own in terms of what I'm posting right now. And so maybe further clarification about what the definition is and what would be posted and what would not be would be helpful in this process as well.
Yes, I think people are looking for as much information as possible and I understand that all of that information is in a lot of different locations. We don't have that central curriculum, you know, page or server. So it's taking a little bit of time to collect all that information. But I think we're looking for classroom, you know, information from what the teachers are actually specifically teaching on a day-to-day basis and also those textbooks and materials that are presented as well. I think overall, that's what we're looking for. Looking at this proposal that we have in front of us today, I really like that we're moving forward with a, a pilot program and a vetting program that allows us to take a look at what's being presented and what will be brought into our classrooms in the following year so that people understand exactly how this is going to play out and can take a good look at it before we put it in the system. I think this is a great idea and moving forward, I think we should continue. Much appreciated. Anyone else? Okay. This is an information item, so we'll move along. Building Committee.
Actually, hold on, Brian. One, one other thing with regards to the AP Government and Politics.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure, sure, just an update on, I believe it was in July or maybe June, a proposal for the AP Government and Politics class came before the board, beginning with the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And at this point, the adoption of this course is going to be put on hold with a, a review of it for possibly in the future.
And the same, same things that we talked about will apply. We had talked about the fact that some of the, there, there's basically a book list that, that is presented and ultimately, before we would move forward with the course itself, we would have the opportunity to review what is the selected book or books for the course just to, to do that cursory review as well.
Okay.
Hey, Brian.
Mike?
Yeah, one more item. I don't know that this is all on you, Brenda, either, but the teacher in-service material, what'll be covered? I think it was learned by the entire board that sometimes the individual schools do their own thing. So I think it might be up to the individual schools and principals or whoever's running the in-service days to send the material in to you or post it so that parents can see what, you know, what's going on in these in-service days.
Yeah, and again, more clarification around in-service and what that means, I think, would help me guide the process. So I think, again, having some definition around what would be posted, what is considered to be posted and some guidelines around that would really help me, again, help the principals and all of us in this process.
I suppose just, just the clarification question if nothing else. In-service, does it fall under curriculum as well? Or is that something different outside of the committee? Just so I know.
I think that's different because not all in-service is curriculum-based, so.
I, I think you would post it in the same area on the website, but it would be two different things, in-service?
Different tab for in-service? Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to item six, Building Committee.
So we did have a committee meeting earlier this evening where Mr. Erickson ran through a number of different items. I'll just highlight a couple. The admin building is now a, has a secure entry due to staffing to, to allow semblance of order, getting in there, making sure that, um, that people are greeted and, and those type of things. The track at the high school has been resurfaced. The soccer fencing has also been replaced. And due to recent storms and also just in general, there'll be a number of trees being removed that are dead and new ones planted. And there was some damage to the, to the baseball fencing, baseball diamond itself, the fencing that's been, that's been repaired. We did get a GSF update, that is our cleaning service that we utilize. There's been a Google form that's been created for staff to submit requests or, or to let GSF know of any sort of issues or problems that they're seeing. We've asked for a twenty-four-hour turnaround and communicating back and, you know, we're, we will continue to utilize that and, and kind of monitor those situations. It's, it's kind of been all over the place as far as maybe what I would say smaller items, but also, you know, whether or not vacuum is, vacuuming has occurred or, or those type of things as well. Their three-year asbestos reinspection is starting this week. We'll get an update on that. Pool deck, continued testing. They're actually isolating and trying to do a, a test on, on the grout. Nine twenty-two, there'll be a walkthrough. Ultimately, the, the folks that we're talking to do still believe that the grout is the issue. And I think that that will be it for this update.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions? Okay, moving on. Item seven, Finance Committee, Mr. Low.
Okay, yes, the Finance Committee did meet earlier this evening. We reviewed and approved vouchers for August. We also discussed the existing debt cost and savings opportunities. Mike Clark from Baird spoke to us. And Mike Clark and Brittany Altendorf have been working very hard trying to save money on our, our bond costs for the referendum. And we've got up to possibly forty million dollars in savings plus some savings in financing costs over the next few years if we can do what we're looking to do. There is a, in the first paragraph, Brittany of the Finance Committee material, DPI is listed there. I was pretty sure that was Department of Instruction, but it wasn't defined. And Mike Clark did confirm that, that it was a Department of Public Instruction. And there, I, I think they're not being very committed to this. So we're kind of playing it safe and the forty million dollars or forty-four million dollars, whatever it, it ends up being in savings, it's not quite as much as was presented back on April twenty-sixth, but I will take forty million dollars or more at any year of the school year, any time of the school year. I don't know, is there anything else you wanted to say, Brittany? Okay, I guess I've done pretty well on summarizing that. The next item is from our comptroller, Tessa Krantz and, of course, Brittany. And it has to do with purchases over fifteen thousand dollars and it's our paper bid. They were asking for annually eight hundred and forty cases of paper. We cut that back to six hundred and we're just looking for paper savings and maybe ways of, you know, as we go to one-to-one Chromebooks, that we should be able to do more things electronically and less things through, you know, using paper. So I bring to the board, I bring forward to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation to award the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two paper bid purchase to Contract Paper Group in an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and charge to the appropriate accounts across the entire district budget.
Okay, that comes to the board with a positive recommendation. Does that require a second? Do we have any discussion? I will say I do appreciate the commentary that we're going to try and scale this back. I think that's a great idea. We've been talking about this for years and it's about time we get serious about it, so appreciate it.
Right. I will say that not being the board president, I stopped getting the board packet, so that alone should save a couple pallets of paper.
At least. Okay. Any further discussion?
I, I thank my fellow Finance Committee members for bringing it up and, you know, changing the numbers a little bit. And I think it's a good deal.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Anything else?
Yes, one more item. this is, um, a line of credit with JP Morgan Chase. Tessa Krantz, again, did a lot of math here to figure out where we are in the budget. And it's quite common to, you know, take out a temporary loan to cover expenses for the remainder of the school year. So we discuss this in finance and I bring forward to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation to approve the use of a line of credit with JP Morgan Chase Bank in the amount not to exceed ten million dollars for cash flow purposes.
Mike?
Yes?
This is going to go to the September twenty-seventh board need, board meeting because we need legal verbiage before you can read the motion, so.
Oh, okay, so.
It went to Finance and it's approved by Finance to go to the board. We're working with legal right now, so the actual legal verbiage will be brought to the September twenty-seventh board meeting. So there's no motion at the board level today.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Is that included with the annual meeting? Is that included with the annual meeting or the board meeting?
From my understanding, there's a board meeting the same day as the annual meeting, so it'll go to the board meeting, not the annual meeting.
Okay, I just want to make sure we get it on the right one. Okay.
Okay, I withdraw that motion.
Denied.
Okay, thanks. And that was it.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to new business, discussion and action to approve teacher resignations, Mr. Knog.
Thank you. Carl Anderson recently submitted a letter of resignation effective September 10th, 2021. Carl was hired in November of 2019 as Dean of Students at Germantown High School. He was scheduled to serve as an English teacher for the 21, 22 school year. We asked him to approve the resignation of Carl Anderson and thank him for his years of service to the students, their families, and to the Germantown School District, approve posting and filling the vacancy. And also note, there's language about liquidated damages below. My fault and error that this references the administrative liquidated damages fee. This would actually be for a teacher. Now, both amounts are the same, but they would be in question in this situation.
Okay. I entertain a motion.
Move approval of the resignation of Carl Anderson and thank him for his years of service to the students, their families, and the Germantown School District, approve posting and filling the vacancy.
Second.
Any discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Item B, discussion and action to approve teacher contracts, Mr. Knog.
We have seven contracts to bring forward, and I think this is kind of our last wave. We have a few more to bring forward at the next meeting, but we're, we're feeling in much better shape right now. The first is Marie Petrockovitz, a school psychologist for the Germantown School District. This would, this is a 1.0 regular contract for seventy-two thousand. Brittany Crowe, second grade teacher at Rockfield Elementary. This is a regular contract for forty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty. Melissa Owens, kindergarten teacher at Amy Bell Elementary School, is a regular contract of forty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty. Albert Allen Jones, a business education teacher at Germantown High School, regular contract, forty thousand dollars. And Kathy Simonas, kindergarten teacher, MacArthur Elementary School, a regular contract for fifty-six thousand. We ask that you approve the contracts as noted.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the contracts as presented.
Second. Any discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item C, discussion and possible action to approve part-time physical education teacher, Mr. Knog.
Thank you. As a result of recent increase in sections at the elementary level throughout the district, we're now experiencing the need to increase physical education staffing as, as an accommodation. Unlike other teaching areas, physical education has historically relied upon the use of overloads to complete teaching assignments. In an effort to alleviate the burden of extensive overloads for teachers, we're requesting the hiring of a sixty percent part-time physical education teacher for the 21, 22 school year. In relative to the financial component of this, we've, as we've said, we've for a long time relied upon overloads. Overloads cost money. And when you balance that with what the part-time teacher would cost, part-time teacher obviously is more, but relatively speaking, it's a, it's a reasonable amount that we think will help the overall delivery, our overall, you know, teaching presentation, if you will. And we ask for your approval.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the request of, of hiring a sixty percent part-time physical education teacher for the 2021, 2022 school year for reasons stated.
Second.
Discussion. Tom.
What school or schools will utilize this part-time teacher?
In particular, right now it looks to be MAC and Rockfield. But there's some talk that we could maybe, there'd be some work with Amy Bell that would occur, but in particular, this part-time teacher would be looking at MAC and Rockfield.
Okay, thank you. Does this have anything to do with the reduced class sizes and larger number of classrooms that we have currently being used? I know we have an overload, but is there an increase in that overload as well? Is that precipitating this problem as well?
Yeah, again, we've always had the overloads, probably more than we should have in years past, and we've managed it, teachers have been okay with it. But when you now, with, with the, what was it, August where we added, I think it was three classrooms, when you add that in, it just becomes too much. Just teachers don't have time in the day to do things they need to do and it's just too difficult.
Okay, thanks.
Budget-wise, are we okay adding this position?
I don't know the difference between the, what was it, the, I'm sorry, the dollar amount to the, to this hire. What was the dollar amount you had for the sixty percent?
Sixty percent.
Okay. I need to know the dollar amount for this, of the sixty percent, what that total is, and then the, the dollar amount for the, if we're going to reduce the overloads. It's currently not in the budget, if that's your question.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Do we have somebody in mind for this position already?
We do, we have a candidate that appears to be ideal, a teacher who, a, a part-time physical education teacher is hard to come by. And this particular candidate is eager to get into the workforce at this particular level, so we feel very comfortable doing so. And relative to the, the amount, we believe that can be done at a, a reasonable amount. When you do the math of what an overload costs versus a starting teacher, it, it's, it's, you know, without getting too detailed in terms of the numbers, it, it's, it comes down to, you know, probably, I would say, the new teacher is about, you know, ten thousand dollars more than the overloads.
Can you work on getting those exact numbers, please?
Well, I will, but we would need to hire the teacher first.
That's still up here, but.
Right.
So, just so I can get that number still.
Yep.
Yeah, I think the board likes to have hard numbers, so anytime you can present that, that's helpful, thank you. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, thank you. Discussion and action to approve Germantown High School Advanced Placement Overnight Travel Request, Mr. Stausland.
Yes, there's a request by Mr. Pfeifer, the Germantown Advanced Placement History Teacher, requesting approval to travel with AP US History and AP European History to London, England, and Paris, France, from Thursday, June 23rd, 2022, through Thursday, June 30th, 2022. The trip will consist of 25 students, one advisor, and four chaperones. Each student advisor and chaperone will be responsible for their own travel expenses. This travel request will be at no cost to the district.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the overnight travel request for Germantown High School Advanced Placement Program to travel to London, England, and Paris, France, from June 23rd, 2022 to June 30th, 2022, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Are they going to be watching numbers and obviously making sure that they're safe and good to go on this trip and not have to quarantine when they're over there and not get to experience anything?
Yep, and the company that they're using has like provisions in there if things are canceled.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Wish them safe travels. Item E, transportation updates and possible action, Mr. Stausland.
Yes, thank you. So a couple different categories of transportation. The first is just an update on, on where we are with busing and I'll ask Ms. Altenorf to jump in when she feels like it. But the, there was several snafus in that first week of school and, and one of it is we had over twenty-one hundred students that had signed up for busing, but an extra three hundred students that were trying to access busing. So they weren't, didn't have assignments on buses and we did reduce our busing from about twenty-nine buses to, to twenty-three, which means our buses were already, you know, they were at not, not full capacity, but, but near that. And when you add in three hundred more students, that did cause some issues. Now, I, that's been sorted. And I know that board member Reideman and Ms. Altenorf went and observed bus loading and, and taking off this last week. And we're really looking for are the buses overcrowded? Does everybody have a seat? My understanding is that they did. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Okay. The, the other piece to the transportation is that the, the driver shortage is, is no joke. It's, it's just, and you're, they don't, drivers don't materialize from sand. People have to get their CDL license and want to drive. We've had a principal drive our early childhood students on a van. We've had coaches driving vans. We've asked parents when they can to, this is, this is for activities, not to get to school. Parents to drive their, their child if they're able to get to certain events by, because by reducing the number of kids that go or that need transportation, we can use vans versus a bus. And that's where the issue is, because any person with a valid driver's license, if they're eighteen or older, can drive our vans. So we're, we're, and we've flipped some, certain meets and, and activities. We've asked people to come to us in hopes that by the time we would have to play that team again and go there, we would have more drivers. So if, and one thing about driving, someone, if they get their CDL, they can choose to drive, if they just want to drive a morning route or an afternoon route, or if they just want to take, drive the tennis team or the cross-country team or whoever it is. So, and, and the truth is, three or four drivers would solve most of our, our problems. And the other, the other piece to this is that because there's just enough drivers to get our routes there, if we have any activities that are leaving, let's say at three o'clock or need to go at three-thirty, they can't. And so we, because the, our bus drivers don't finish their afternoon route to about four-thirty, four, forty-five. So that, that's where the big, the big rub is. And we've, we've been trying to adjust start times of events, but something like a cross-country event where there's no lights, because they usually run on a golf course or some other place, that has to leave at a certain time so they get their, their runs in before dark. I know area, some area, area schools have had to actually, they canceled events because they just didn't have buses. And we haven't had to do that yet. And we've put the word out looking for, for drivers, but it's, the, the shortage is, is real. Brittany, anything to add?
Not around the bus shortage, more about the capacity of the buses. As you know, we tried to, in previous years, we routed every single person that was eligible for, to ride the bus, even if they weren't going to ride or if they were going to ride. So because we did decrease the amount of buses, we tried to be proactive with sending out a form multiple times that parents would then sign up. So that's the twenty-two hundred of the, the kids that actually signed up for that, which then put the right, a number of kids, not overcrowding on the buses, but having three hundred-plus students show up on those days, yes, there were more kids, not, not illegal amount of kids, but more kids than are ideal. So we have moved kids to different routes, knowing that we had those three hundred and I think it's like three hundred and forty more students come on the buses then. So hopefully that's going to decrease. I requested from the bus company the number and names of kids on each bus, so I know that there isn't three to a seat. If there has to be three to a seat, yes, I know it's uncomfortable, but it's like for the, a short period of time. And then also, I know at the beginning of the year, a lot of buses were coming late. We have been tracking that they are more on time as each day goes on. So you should be a lot closer to the letter that the parents received on their pickup and drop-off times. And if they're not, they can call me and I will work with the bus company.
Any questions on that?
When our parents are having issues or hearing things that are happening on the bus, what, where can we direct them to share that information?
Yeah, I mean, building principals, but also Ms. Altenorf has taken almost all of those, those calls. And we're aware of a couple instances on buses and we do have cameras and we, I shouldn't say we, Brittany or the principals pulled, get, get the video pulled from the bus company and it's shared with them so they can, they can review it, so.
One, one thing I would also ask, because obviously the way the buses are running right now, if, it's a snowball effect, right? If something delays the earlier buses, it does kind of snowball downhill. The, the thing that I would ask for, because MacArthur ran into this, I believe it was the first week, where email notification to let the parents know that the buses were running late went out, that's fine, that's good. But I know, I'm a MacArthur parent, so I know that it, it showed hitting my inbox at 5:04. I know for a fact that email didn't go out then. It's obviously how, how the messaging system works and it doesn't shoot them all out at once, they, they kind of have to do that to avoid the spam folder. So the one thing I would just ask is, is, is there a better way to get the, the word out? I'm sure there's probably a few different ideas, but it's, it's just one of those things where I, we pick up our kids just because we, we live right there, so it's not as big of an issue for, for me personally. But I know, seeing that at 5:04, wondering like, where, you know, are they running late and not getting notified and having that email show up just isn't, doesn't seem an efficient way to, to communicate that out. So if we could try to figure out some better way or more immediate way, I think that would be helpful in, in this particular case, but probably for other schools since, since we are on a tight timeframe.
Did that, that come from GoRightWay or did it come from our Skyward system?
It came from Skyward.
Because we could, we actually, with our ThrillShare system, that's where we can SMS message people and that might, might be a quicker, a quicker way to do it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to look into that because I wasn't notified that it was, it's odd that I wasn't notified that the bus is going to be that late and not an email was going out, because it should really have gone out when it was starting to be late at the two-thirty-five or whenever it started at the high school or middle school level. So that should have been plenty of time to notify you. So I don't know, I'll have to look into what the process is to send something out. There is also an app that other school districts use, which I've used in the past, which we may look at in the future, that will track your student's bus. So you'll know exactly where the bus is and exactly when it's supposed to arrive at your house. So that might be an option we could bring to the Transportation Committee in the future.
I like that idea and I think the SMS system should be utilized so parents can get a text message. I think that's the way most people communicate quickly and effectively nowadays, so I would recommend that be the preferred system.
Yeah, and we can build groups by bus number.
Right.
You know, so if it's just one bus that's being there, three buses, then we can, we can manage that, so.
That'd be great. Okay, any further discussion?
So with the increase of students, and I know we've said we've moved everybody around and, and we're good to go, did we need to add another bus?
Not right now.
Thank you.
I, and thanks, thank you for bringing that up, because what would be important to know is if we do need to add a bus, that we can just add a bus, like not have to come back to the, to the board meeting to ask, say, oh, you know, wait two weeks to go, we need to add a bus because we don't have enough.
Do you need a motion for that?
Space for kids, so I don't think we need.
I don't think we need a motion for it.
I don't think we need a motion, but just so people know, and obviously we would let, let the board know that, just so you know, we've added a route because of X, Y, and Z.
Yeah. I would say absolutely yes.
Okay.
I speak from, I mean, anybody else?
I, I, I would be okay with adding a route, a route, if we need to, you know, we maybe should do it through a motion. I think we can because transportation is on the agenda tonight.
Correct.
Also, I would like to thank Brit- Also, I would like to thank Brittany for all the extra work dealing with parents and the bus company. Brittany has plenty to do right now in, in preparation for the annual meeting, but because she is the business manager, she's also the point of contact with Right Way. And I don't really want to throw Right Way under the bus, pun intended. But you, you know, early in the, in the school year, there usually are some busing issues. I think it's been a little bit worse this year, but certainly I would move to, if we need to, add a route.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
Brian, if we do need to add a route, Brett or I will just send an email to let the board know.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anything further on transportation? Okay. Discussion and possible action regarding mitigation and return to school plan, Mr. Stausland.
Yes, thank you. So routinely I, I bring the information that comes, all this comes from the Washington Ozaki County Health, their website. And just looking, and this is, this gives us just an idea of what's happening in our, our local communities. You can see that this was from last Friday. So the, the Washington County Health is now updating their numbers on like Thursday evening. So Friday is their most recent numbers. And looking at this, you can see this, again, this is community burden. It, it's lower this last week than it was two weeks prior. Something else that they added, they added this cumulative cases. And they, they have Ozaki County as well. I just grabbed Washington County's information, but just to, and they, they broke it down by the ages of students. And this is a rolling, I mean, this is not average, this is cumulative. So every case is the not the, the lines will keep going, going up and, and hopefully plateau at some point. Actually, they won't because it's cumulative. So, and the other one is the rolling, seven-day rolling average of positive tests. Now, the white line is Ozaki County, the, the light blue line is, is Washington County. And again, these are things that anyone can access on their website. It just gives us a, a little bit of a dip to, dipstick test on where, where we are as, where as, as a community. And there's also some, some numbers by vaccinations by county. And again, they're doing it by twelve to fifteen-year-olds, sixteen to seventeen-year-olds and sixty-five and olders for, for both, for both counties, Ozaki and Washington County. And then our local data, if you go to our website and you click on the menu button, the menu button will give you lots of options. And under the about us is a, it says, I don't know if you can read it from, from in the audience, but it says COVID dashboard. If you click on that, you'll get this dashboard to the right. Last year, this is the same dashboard, but we did add, for last year, we had students when they were quarantined. And I know there was some, we've had different emails from, from different parents and we'll continue to, and our tech department is working on this behind the scenes and we'll continue to try to either A, run rolling averages, not rolling averages, but rolling numbers so people can look back week to week. So it's not just the five-day snapshot. And we can add when people are quarantined on here. But usually if there's a positive case, you're going to know they're quarantined. But I say that in the next slide, I'm going to talk to, talk to you as a board about quarantining when there's a positive, quarantining students when there's another positive case in the same household. We, we just talked about busing because this has been a back and forth. And I checked with all the, or rechecked with all the superintendents this last week in these area schools. Right now, they're, they're all following and a lot of these company, or a lot of these groups who use Go Right Way as well. And Right Way came out with a statement, it's on this page, and that first paragraph, Right Way said, "It's the policy of Go Right Way to follow the current CDC guidance and require that all passengers and drivers on a school bus wear a face mask. We will work in cooperation with each district to address and report, but not deny transportation to students who refuse a mask." The information that was coming to state superintendents from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, because this has been a topic across the state, states that a district does not have authority to instruct a company to waive federal guidelines and bus companies shouldn't be enforcing masks per TSA. So when we ask Right Way, what is your stance on, on masks, they're saying, "We're following CDC guidance and require all passengers and drivers on a school bus to wear a face mask." Now, the, the bottom paragraph, that's up, this is what, this is Hartford's statement that they have in their, in their mitigation strategies or information. And they're, they're saying, "Face coverings on buses or district-provided transportation is currently a federal requirement and the district will support our bus company and comply with all laws, regulations, and orders they must follow. The order recently was extended from September to January, but if, if it were to change, we will align our expectations to the choice we afford on campus." Any questions about that or statements about that or, you know, if, if Right Way is telling us, "Look, we're, we're going to follow this and masks are required," I feel we need to follow what, this is their company. We, we need to follow that. They've been, we've had, I would say mixed messages on some things. And I think our drivers have had mixed messages where some were, were saying kids couldn't get on if they, if they had a mask, if they didn't have a mask. Other ones, other drivers weren't wearing a mask and, and weren't, weren't making them. And we, we had made the statement before school started that we, that students should or that we recommend them, knowing that Right Way was not going to deny a student transportation, but then would just let us know as a school to say, "Hey, this kid didn't have a mask." And then it would be for, for us to, to deal with. But I think Right Way has, has taken not a different stance, but are saying, "Look, we, we're going to follow CDC guidelines." So my, my statement would be is if they're telling us this is what they need to happen, then we would do, we would follow their, their guidance.
So to clarify, they're no longer saying that they're going to allow the kids to drive, ride the bus without a mask if they refuse to?
They're still kind of saying that though. That's the, that's the confusion that we have to clear up with.
Because according to the federal mandate, there's no punishment to the child for not wearing a mask.
Correct.
So if we don't let them ride the bus, there would be a punishment. Okay. Any other discussion, questions?
I read the federal guidelines. The TSA references trains, airplanes, and public buses. They do not reference school buses or private, or private bus systems that we use. So if something appeared in the question and answer section of the federal website, I'm not sure about that. It seems a citizen read something about that, but that's not part of the law. There's, there's also more. The school buses are an extension of the school and the board has jurisdiction. And I do not intend to give up the authority of what happens on our school buses to the CDC, a group of unelected bureaucrats. And, and also, I respectfully add, of course, you can find a website that will tell you anything you want to hear. But I found a website that stated just what one of the citizens did this evening, that the CDC was influenced by the National Teachers Unions. Show a little respect. What? You also misquoted me. So please be quiet. You misquoted me. So I don't want to hear any more from you this evening. Do I make that clear?
Anything else?
I think I, I think I covered it. I mean, the school board has jurisdictions on the school bus and also at the location where students gather waiting for the school bus. So in some cases, students walk out from a cul-de-sac because the school bus cannot go into the cul-de-sac. The school district has jurisdiction at that location on the street where the students are waiting for the bus. So we have wide local control over the schools, the buses, and where students wait for those buses. I do not see that federal law applying to our situation. We use a private bus system. That's how I read it.
Okay, Mr. Stausland.
Bob can go.
Yeah, there's a lot of information on both sides of the argument. I'm a mask optional person to include the buses. However, I will add that I don't want to do anything to put Right Way's certification or licensing in jeopardy. I would like to have more clarity in terms of, I'm reading this last paragraph there, laws, regulations, and orders. What does that mean? What specifically, where's the guidance or the law or the regulation that mandates masking on buses? And also, and also President Biden last week issued several executive orders. I would like to find out, and I have not reviewed any of those, but I would like to find out, are any of those orders govern school districts or school buses, whether it's a private one or whether it's through a third party with Right Way. And I agree with my colleague that we have authority over Right Way, which is a third party, but it's our bus. But I don't want to do anything to put Right Way's licensing or certification or whatever they have that governs the conveyance of students. And I don't know, I'm not prepared tonight to make a decision on voting, make masks mandatory on buses, because I don't have the information, so.
I'm unclear what we're actually trying to do because we've, we've taken a stance as a district. They've come out with their policy, which is their right to, to go ahead and declare that policy. We have information that, from WASB, that district does not have authority to instruct a company to waive federal guidelines. We've taken our stance, they've taken theirs. They've said if, sorry, I'm going to find the quote, but basically if, if, you know, they'll, they'll let us know, but not deny a student the right to ride if they refuse a mask. I, I, I'm not sure what we would be voting on in this particular case. So.
Yeah, I think, I, I think what I was, two things, getting at that there's, is confusion because of the statements. But if, if Right Way were to come out and say, "Look, we need everyone to wear masks," that we would follow Right Way's, Right Way's direction, since they are the company that we're contracted with.
I think we still fall in the same spot. They, they have the opportunity to, however they, however they interpret the rules and regulations that are out there, to come out with a policy such as this. But based off of information that's provided to us, we've been told we can't override that. So I, I think we're at a standstill right now until we get some further clarification. I agree with Bob. I mean, I don't want to put their, their license in jeopardy, but at the same time, I'm not convinced that either we are or that we've enhanced the opportunity that their license would be in jeopardy. We have the right to, to create our own policy. If, if they want to take a different tact, in theory, they have that opportunity. And so I, like I said, I, I don't know what we're really trying to accomplish. I, I mean, it's, we have to, there's too much confusion right now to go one way or the other is how I see it. If we have some better definition, if we have some better guidance, one way or the other, well, we can take it up at another meeting is, is my opinion.
There's no motion on the table right now, and I wouldn't expect anyone to make a motion on this subject. We have in policy masks recommended on buses. And, you know, it's what we did at the last board meeting. It was a minor change in verbiage from, you know, months earlier where we said masks optional. So we've said masks recommended. And it, it wasn't something I felt we needed to argue about at the time. You know, it was a, a minor change in my opinion and, and we just go with it. So as far as parents are concerned, if you believe masks work, put a mask on your student, you know, when they leave the house in the morning. And if you believe masks don't work, don't send your school, your student to school with a mask. Personally, I can't wear the mask. The other thing that happens, I'm a little fearful for students in tech ed, masks and safety glasses don't work. The safety glasses tend to fog up. So it's a, it's a serious issue.
Okay. I believe that Right Way has the right to do what they want to do. And if they want to enforce their mandate, that's their right. But we will keep our recommendations in place. And I think that seems to be the consensus. I don't hear a motion coming forward.
Okay. The, the next thing is on quarantining. And prior to school starting, we talked about that if there was a, if a person, if a student was positive, that they would be asked to be quarantined for ten days from onset of symptoms or a positive test, whichever one came first. Well, what we didn't talk about is if there's a positive case in the same household, what I'm recommending that the, we, that any student in the same household with a positive case, unless they've been vaccinated and aren't showing symptoms, that they're quarantined as well. And, and I say that because we've had several cases already in, in two of our schools where someone was positive in the household, they sent the siblings, the siblings then became positive. And there's been, you can't do a direct link, I wouldn't say, but then you, all of a sudden, there's two more students in that class that are, that are positive. And one thing that is, that we are seeing already in, in the early days is that the, the number of students becoming positive is happening a lot quicker than it did last year. And I don't know if that's just the variant, I mean, that's if you, what you read on it, but that's looking at our own data. And so, you know, I, I think the, the household one makes sense. Washington County has shared that it's a seventy-five percent plus infection rate in the same household with unvaccinated people. So, and then, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I support that a hundred percent. So what you're saying.
I agree. Do you want a motion specifically for that?
That'd be helpful.
So I move to add the mitigation adjustments for positive cases in the same household, quarantine students for ten days. If vaccinated, no need to quarantine unless showing symptoms. There's safety and there's discrimination. You sit here and tell us.
I'll second that.
Week after week, you're not going to yell at us, and you do. I'm tired of it.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
This is going to include the seventy-five percent same household, close contact and return after seven days with a negative test. Are we doing the whole quarantine section in your motion? Or are we just saying? in your motion? Or are we just saying positive case in the same household?
Yeah, the, the, the close contact day seven is standard. So they can, if they're, after seven days.
So just the first part.
Yep. And they got to, could be turned on a negative test.
Any further discussion?
Hey, Brian. I think, I think this makes sense, uh, because we've got a whole school year under our belt with COVID, the last school year. And, uh, while our nurse isn't here to talk about it, what we found was is that, uh, COVID was very unlikely to transfer student to student at school. It was unlikely to transfer from student to teacher at school. Uh, it was likely to transfer from teacher to teacher at school or outside of school. And it was very likely to transfer from parent to student at home. So we did see those events where, uh, it, it actually worked out to the school district's advantage, I would say, is that it didn't transfer very well at school, but it did transfer well at home. So I, I was a little bit disappointed to hear that, uh, if there was a positive case, uh, at home, that the parent, uh, still, parents still sent, uh, a student that wasn't showing any symptoms, uh, to school. And I, I think it's risky, uh, when we're trying to keep the schools open. So please, you know, bear with us on this one.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
The other, the other thing is, um, there's been some confusion around if we are, um, contact tracing. And we, we've always said that, yes, we, we were going to contact trace when we can and we'll let those, um, families know. I know, I let, let those families know, um, if their child's been within three feet, um, for more than, um, fifteen minutes of a, of a positive case. Now, we can't, so if, if, let's say, because we've had this already where a student was positive and we knew they were at lunch, then they were at recess. We don't know every kid that they were, they were next to, but like at the elementary level, I would say all the classrooms have seating charts and you can kind of look. Now, three feet, um, you know, greater than, than, than three feet, the six feet rule made things a lot more challenging. Um, but three feet isn't, um, we can be within three feet, almost desk to desk is a little more than three feet. So, um, they may not be as many students, um, you know, in quarantine because of that. But also the other thing is if we get, uh, two or three cases, um, we had an elementary school today with three cases in one, one classroom, you know, we send a letter that says to all the parents that there's been three cases. Um, and when we, when we can, um, say there's been three cases in, uh, in Mr. X's room and, uh, two cases in Mrs. Z's room, we can say, we can be specific with the classroom because there's multiple kids in each of those. What we can't say is that there's been one case in, in teacher A's room because it's identifiable, it'd be identifiable to who that student was. But when you have multiple cases in multiple classrooms, we can be specific with, with the rooms. And I know that's frustrating for parents not to know or to get a letter that, oh, these, there's two cases. Well, I don't know if my own kid was close to that student or not, but we will, um, you know, we will identify families if we can determine that their, their child was a close contact. So that, that should help. Um, but we're getting, trying to get the information out just so people are, are aware. And we're in, in new territory once again with the number of, um, cases because it is, seems to be, um, we're getting more student cases at the elementary than we had last, last year. So, um, we'll, we'll keep working with the numbers and get information out when we can and, um, you know, notify parents as much as we can.
Thank you.
That's all I have on that.
Okay. Any further questions? All right. Moving on to item G, discussion and action to approve donations. Mr. Stausler.
Yes, I have, um, we have one donation, if I can find it. It is, um, I know it was a, as air purifiers, uh, that were donated to Amy Bell's school, um, for, and it was donated by, um, the Feitch family for a kindergarten classroom at Amy Bell at a, uh, cost of $429. And so we'd like to thank the donor for their, um, generosity and donation.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Law?
I have a question. I think based on everything we're talking about, this is one that supposedly might kill the COVID-19 virus? Or no?
I, I don't know. You mean the air purifier?
Right. I mean, I, I think the implication is here it's for COVID-19.
I don't have an answer.
So we just don't know. Okay. Just curious.
It can't hurt. I'll put it that way.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. I'll entertain another motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. We are adjourned at nine twenty-one. Thank you all for coming. And please drive home safely.